Thing to order, make note of that. Thank you, David, very much. Looks like we're good to go. Good morning, everyone, and welcome. We will call and order this regular meeting of the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, July 15, 2025. I appreciate everybody joining us. I'll note that the meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. Would ask if you have a cellphone, if you'd please put it on vibrate or silent. We would appreciate that. Want to note for the record that Commissioner Sanada is today traveling back from a conference, so he phoned in. So Mr. Sanada is participating by speakerphone today. We always begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance and then would ask you to stand for a moment, we can have a moment of silence. Mr. Kennedy, could you please? A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sanada?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here. Thank you. Chris, you're hearing us okay?
Yes.
Good, alrighty. We always have time during the meeting, both at the beginning and at the end, for public comment. If you'd like to speak, you're welcome to speak both times, or if you just want to speak one of the times, that's okay. If you're just here to listen, that's also fine. We ask that your comments be related to county government matters, please, and if you could try to limit your time to about five minutes, we'd appreciate that. We always set aside time for our row officers in case they have anything they wish to discuss. Today, none of them are in our meeting. They're not required to be here, but we do give them that opportunity. So that takes us to public comment. I'll open it up, see if anybody at this time has any public comment. It appears not, so we'll do this before we adjourn. We're going to move on to fiscal and contractual, and we've received six repository bids from our tax claim office. And Dan, if you'd like, I'll walk through them, and Chris as well. We can, when we get through, entering them into the record, if you, gentlemen would like, if you're satisfied, we can take one motion for all six, but if you'd like to break them out, we can do likewise. So we'll start. What number do we give this first one, Vanessa?
One sixty-five.
One sixty-five, thank you. I do want to note that the agenda is correct on the resolution itself. If you, it has been done so already, if you would scratch, in the final paragraph, scratch the words "City of Newcastle" and instead plug in "Union Township." But number one sixty-five is a bid of $600 that has been made by Three EX Properties LLC slash Deborah Santos. And she made this $600 bid on a parcel located on West Washington Street in Union Township, parcel number three four dash zero four nine eight zero zero. I'll note that the Union Township Supervisors accepted and voted on this bid back on May 15 of this year. And I'll make a blanket statement for all six of these. I spoke with Brian Burek, the director of the tax claim office. He said in all six of these instances, notices were sent to the respective school districts, but none of them responded. However, there are three municipalities involved with these six: Union Township, Wayne Township, City of Newcastle. We did hear from those municipalities. Mr. Burek reminded us that each taxing body has 60 days in which to respond, and if no response is received, it is deemed approved by that board. So in this case, number one sixty-five, we did get a response from the union supervisors. They approved it, and this would be for us to consider. Now, Dan and Chris, I'm going to start and see, I'll start with Dan. Any questions on this first one? No? Chris?
No.
Okay. Gentlemen, you want me to keep going, or do you want to vote on them one-on-one?
Yeah.
Keep going? Okay.
Keep going.
Thank you. Number one six six is a bid that has been made by Dwayne Frishcorn for a parcel in the First Ward of the City of Newcastle on Sheridan Avenue, property number zero one zero four four five zero zero. Now, the bid amount is $250, and I did speak with Mr. Burek about this. We discussed the fact that bids, according to our policy, should start at 500, but he reminded me that state law permits honorably discharged veterans to make bids beginning at $250. And in this case, the person making the bid falls under that definition. So the bid is for $250. The City Council of Newcastle approved this on June 24, and as noted earlier, we did not receive any response from the Newcastle area school district, as with the prior one, we did not receive any response from the Union area of the school district. So this is Resolution 166. Mr. Sanada, any questions?
No, Jared.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
None.
Thank you. Number one sixty-seven, this is once again, the bid has been made by Mr. Frishcorn, Dwayne Frishcorn. He is bidding $250 on a parcel in the City of Newcastle in the First Ward, also located on Sheridan Avenue, but it is a different parcel. No, no, wait a minute.
No, I dare to bid it.
Have you folks seen what I'm seeing? Do we have a duplicate here? Zero one, four four five. Oh, no, they are separate. Yes, it is, it is different, excuse me. The first parcel, you're right, Dan, first parcel that we just discussed was zero one, zero four four five zero zero on Sheridan Avenue, .14 acre. This next one that we just started to talk about, Resolution 167, is parcel ID number zero one zero four four six hundred, acreage of .21, also on Sheridan Avenue. Again, this was made by Mr. Frishcorn, amount of $250. Newcastle City Council approved this bid on June 24. I'll keep going unless there are any questions on this particular proposal. Chris or Dan, any concerns?
No.
Okay, thank you. And we move on to number one six eight. This is a bid that has been made by Betsy Blackiston in the amount of $505 for a parcel on North Crawford Avenue in the Third Ward of the City of Newcastle, ID number zero three dash one seven five one zero zero. The acreage is .09. And the Newcastle City Council approved this on June 24, and as we've noted earlier, we did not hear from the Newcastle School District. Mr. Kennedy, any concerns? Okay, Mr. Sanada?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go on to number one sixty-nine. This is a bid of $500 for a parcel located in Wayne Township. The bid was made by Paul Mononato and is for parcel number three six dash nine zero three seven two zero. It's a trailer in Wayne Township. The Wayne Township Supervisors approved this bid on May 1 of this year, and we did not hear back from the Elwood City Area School District. Chris, any questions on number one sixty-nine?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
None.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the final bid. This is Resolution number one seventy. It's a bid in the amount of $500 made by Michael M. Lewis for a parcel on West Long Avenue in the Eighth Ward of the City of Newcastle, parcel number zero eight dash zero three four three hundred. And the City Council approved this on May 22 of this year. We did not hear back from Newcastle Area School District. Mr. Kennedy, any questions on Resolution 170?
None.
Thank you. Mr. Sanada?
No.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, Resolutions 165 up through and including 170 are before us for our consideration. And if one of you would be willing, I could accept a motion to approve all. Please. Okay, thank you, Chris. I'll start then. Thank you, Dan. Chris, any final questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kennedy, any final question?
None.
Thank you. The motion for the approval of Resolutions 165 up through and including 170, it's been appropriately seconded, and we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. We have warrant registers in our packet from the Controller's Office dated July 7, 8, and 11, and I'll give my colleagues time to look these over. And whenever you're ready, gentlemen, I could accept a motion for us to accept these documents and enter them into the record.
I agree.
Thank you, Chris. We'll wait for Mr. Kennedy.
Sure.
I'll start then.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sanada, you did make a motion, is that correct?
Well, I disagree, but I'll make a motion if that's what you mean.
Yeah, please, because Mr. Kennedy.
I'll make.
Thank you, Chris. And Mr. Kennedy will offer the second. Any questions on the warrant registers? Hearing, hearing none. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. The minutes of last week's meeting, Tuesday, July 8, they're in our packet. I'll give you, gentlemen, time to look them over, and whenever you're ready, I could take a motion for us to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Dan, is there a, is there a second?
I'll back it down, I'll give you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any questions on the minutes? Hearing, hearing none, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Commissioner reports and comments. Chris, you get to go first to that.
Well, I'm going to pass this week. I'll be there next week, I'll give you a briefing on some of the festivities at the conference.
Okay, thank you, and we wish you safe travels on the rest of your trip home.
Thank you.
Let's see, which Dan gets to go next? It looks like it's, Mr. Kennedy, you're next.
Oh, the other thing I did over the weekend was make it down to the fireworks festival, and that was a pretty good-sized turnout. It'll be a nice night, nice day, and lots of people downtown Newcastle. It worked out very well.
Good to hear. Thank you. Well, I'll note that last Thursday, Dan Kennedy and I attended the, they meet quarterly? Is that preservation, preservation meet every quarter? Yeah, we attended the, I have a preservation board meeting up in Wilmington Township. And looking ahead, oh, oh, no, stop for a second. Back on Saturday, I stopped down at the Train Fest, down at the West Pittsburgh Station, down in Taylor Township, got to see Mr. Crippo there. So it's good to see you there, Mike.
Yeah.
And looking ahead, tomorrow, we've been invited to attend a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Butler County Community College Facility in Shenango Township. And then on Friday, we've been invited to attend the graduation ceremonies for Leadership Lawrence County, which will be held at the Lawrence County Fairgrounds up in Hickory Township. And then Saturday of this coming weekend is Community Day down in the Borough of Inand Valley, which is always a very nice event. I'll tell you what, if you're looking for something to do on Saturday, it's a neat place to go. They have a lot of activities, very family-oriented. That's all I have at this time. We have on our agenda five contracts that fall under the jurisdiction of Mental Health and Developmental Services, and Scott Baldwin, our director, is with us, and Scott, if you'd be kind enough to come forward, we appreciate you being with us today. Before you start, Scott, let me mention to both Dan and Chris, gentlemen, like we normally do, if you don't mind, we can have Scott walk us through these, and we get, if we get to the end, if you'd like, we can take one blanket motion, or if you need for us to split it out, we can do likewise. I hope that's okay with both of you.
I'll find with it.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. So we start with Resolution 171. Scott, this is a contract with BHC Advanced Services, Inc. Can you fill us in on this, please?
So this one's a little different. This is actually revenue that we pulled down from BHC, it's not a provider that we pay, but I believe it does need to run through a Commissioner's meeting for a few of them. These were dollars that the state made available to the western region, so we share money with Mercer, Crawford, and Benito, and Washington, Westmoreland, and Potter. And these are forensic mental health dollars that were made available to counties, and the amount that we requested was 202,764, which we are awarded. And this pays for mental health-related forensic activity. So folks that go into the jail, some of our housing for people leaving the jail, these are service, these are dollars that pay for staff, and casework, and some housing, so. So this is a contract that we have with BHC who holds the funds, and then they distribute them to the counties. So this is revenue for our office, in the amount of 202,764. BHC, the BHC stands for the Behavioral Health Commission of Mercer County. So Mercer's structured a little different. There is a provider that accesses the county mental health office. They control these funds, and we have a contract with them, and then they release those funds as we draw them.
Let me see if Mr. Kennedy has questions.
If we don't, if we don't use all these dollars that go back to the state.
No, actually, we draw everyone down to the penny, and sometimes other counties don't use theirs, and then they offer us more at the end of the year, so we take advantage of it fully. But you're correct, if we don't use these dollars, they're returned back to the state. But we draw them all back. We had, actually, there was more money available to us last year, and if we came through, we could ask for more, so we'll spend it if it's available.
Do you have anything else?
None.
Mr. Sanada, any questions for Mr. Baldwin?
No, but I know there's a need, Scott, and I know you do this very efficiently, so we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, Chris. Gentlemen, since this resolution is a little different from the other ones, I feel a little more comfortable if perhaps we voted on this one separately, if you guys are so willing. If so, would one of you care to make a motion for Resolution 171?
I'll make.
I'll make the motion.
I'll start then.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded for consideration of Resolution 171 that Mr. Baldwin presented. Any other concerns or discussion? Hearing none?
No.
We'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then, Scott, is it safe to say that the next four are similar in nature?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start with proposed Resolution 172. It's a contract with Community Alternatives that are located out on Scott Lane in Union Township.
Sure. Yeah, so these are our provider contracts. This one will start July 1, 2025, and runs through to June 30, 2026. Community Alternatives is one of our mental health clinics in Lawrence County. They provide case management. They have a service called Crisis Case Management that deals with some of our most acute cases. So this is a contracted amount of $180,000 to provide for these variety of services that they offer. Again, they're a welcome partner and a long-time provider in Lawrence County. Again, these are all paid out of Human Services Block Grant Funds, no cost to the county, but as all our providers know, the state budget's still in flux. We can't pay services until we receive them, so we're kind of keeping an eye on this, but all our providers are aware of that.
Thank you. Chris, I'll see if you have any questions.
I have none.
Thank you. Dan? Okay, thank you. Number 173 would be with Dining Changes Counseling, located at 2722 Wilton Avenue. I'm guessing they're either in the city or in Nishannick.
Right up next to Coney Island.
They can be in Nishannick Township. So what can you tell us about this organization?
And another provider contract running, starting July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. These are paid out of Human Services Block Grant Funds, no cost to the county. And Guiding Changes was formerly Clover Psychological. Remember Kathy Clover? She has retired finally, well-deserved retirement for Kathy. This was her agency that the provider has purchased. So they provide a very specialized forensic service for our adults and children in Lawrence County. These are all forensic-related services. I would say we're in desperate need of these type of providers. We're happy to contract with them, so the amount that we use for this, again, this is for therapy, individual group therapy. They also go into the jail and provide services for men who have, are in a batterer's, domestic violence-type situation, and provide therapy in there as well. So that total amount is $125,000.
Thank you. Dan, any questions? No. Chris, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Number 174 is a contract with People in Need, and they're based out in Union Township.
Yeah, this is our mental health clinic in Lawrence County. This is starting July 1, 2025, runs through to June 30, 2026. The total amount is $50,000 paid out of Human Services Block Grant Funds, no cost to the county. And this is to help offset services that they provide that are not billable. So this is like a case management that helps folks get enrolled, help provide insurance, things that they do that they can't bill an insurance for, the county helps support their insurance. It's for $50,000. People in Need is another long-time provider that we like to support.
Thank you, Scott. Chris, any questions?
No.
Thank you. Dan? Alrighty, thank you. And the final contract proposal, Resolution 175, is with Psych Med Associates. Looks like they're based out in Nishannick Township.
Yeah, that bit in this building. This is, again, a contract for fiscal 25, 26, starting July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026, paid out of Human Services Block Grant Funding for an amount of $140,000. And Psych Med Associates is a private outpatient mental health clinic that where Dr. Matta works out of. We use Dr. Matta for a lot of different services. Again, he'll go into the jail and do evaluations and make recommendations for us, as well as the courts. He does a lot of trainings for us as well, provide a lot of social media, mental health-related type of trainings. But they also do some services that are not available, that they usually take a loss on, because they're pretty important. They're actually one of our largest outpatient providers in the county. We like to help offset some of those losses, so that's what the contract's for, and then again, it's about $140,000.
Scott, thank you. Questions, Dan? Okay. Chris, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. So Mr. Baldwin has presented to us Resolutions 172 up through and including 175. Would one of you gentlemen wish to make a motion for the approval of those resolutions?
I'll make a motion to approve 172.
I'll back it, a motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded for approval of these proposed resolutions. And if there are no final questions or concerns, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Scott, good to see you, you guys. Take care. Have a good rest of the day, too. Children and Youth Services has seven proposals for us to look at today, starting with number 177, and, whoops, my mistake, 176, I apologize, thanks for catching me. And Mike Crippo from CYS is with us, and Mike, as always, these supporting documents are very, very helpful.
They're, they're a little mixed up. They, yeah, ordered, what's on the agenda, so.
It's all right, we'll work through it. Problem. So what we have on the agenda, the first one, oh, do we have all renewals, or?
All renewal, all renewal.
All renewals today? Okay, thank you. And again, unless Chris or Dan object, what we'll do is we'll just start walking through them. If one of my colleagues needs to stop and separate them out, we can do so, or when we get to the end, if everything's in order, we can take one motion to cover them. But the first one is 176, which is the Children's Advocacy Center that's based here in Union Township, Lawrence County. You want to start with that one, please?
Yeah, yeah, that's an in-home provider. This is unique this year because I didn't have the history because they were program-funded, now they're going fee-for-service. So looking back over the data, John negotiated this rate, so I have no history to base it on from last year because of program, or fee-for-service now. They don't have that in their contract.
Commissioner Sanada, any questions?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy? Alrighty, thank you. Number 177 is the Children's Aid Society of Mercer County, based in Mercer County. Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, that's a foster care that we do use quite a bit. They got a 4% increase from last year. They currently, like, two years ago, we had nine, last year we had nine, currently we have been getting the foster care there. So they were pretty steady, yet sometimes no percent increase. They had a 4%, they did jump high because they were really under low value for their rate, and then the last two years, 4% increase. It's still one of the lowest foster care rates.
Thank you. I'll see if Mr. Kennedy has any questions.
No.
No? Commissioner Sanada, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Number 178 would be a contract renewal with diversified treatment alternative centers based out in Sunbury, which is in Northumberland County.
This was originally used as a backup. We haven't used them, so that really, at least, we, you know, we've never had a face in town. It's more of a backup when I did this contract.
Understood. Thank you. Chris, any questions for Mike?
No.
Okay. Dan, anything?
None.
All right, thank you. Number 179 is a proposal with Twin Pines Family Services out of Hawkewood, which is out in Fayette. which is out in Fayette County. Uh, Mike, what can you tell us?
Uh, this is another, this is a foster care program, again, this was originally used, uh, as a backup in case we need them. Uh, so we've never placed a kid there yet.
I see. Okay. Dan, any questions?
None.
Chris, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Number one eighty is a proposed contract with NHY Family Services out of Butler County. Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, uh, in-home provider. Um, they, uh, have two programs that we do use. Uh, currently, we don't have anyone there right now being, uh, use their, using their service, but, now, this is a, this is, this is kind of goofy because it is a twenty-four percent increase, but we've gone a lot of months that medical paid the bill, so there was no fee for the county. Okay? So I bet you, I think, nine or ten months that we didn't even get a bill whenever people were there. So it is a, a big increase, but medically, uh, medical usually picks up the, the, the question.
Let's hope that continues.
Yeah.
Um, let me ask, Chris, any, uh, any questions on this one?
No.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
No.
All righty. Number one eighty one is a contract with City Mission-Living Stones, Inc., in, uh, Union Town, uh. Am I, am I missing it? No, no, I'm not. Here it is, Fayette County, number four A. I got it.
Yep. Um, this, we didn't have a contract with them last year, but we had a, a contract with them the year before. Um, we currently don't have any, uh, we use them as a backup.
I, I admire how you're able to keep track of all of these, Mike, uh, give me a lot of credit. Uh, Chris, any questions on resolution one eighty one?
No.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
I'm good.
All right. And the final one, number one eighty two, is with, uh, a contract with Hoffman Homes, Inc., based out of Adams County. Mike, can you fill us in on this one?
It's a group home, and it was another one that I used for backup. The last couple of years, I've had, uh, a lot of the foster people are looking for aid to, that we can contrast with, we've never given.
Okay. It's good to have it placed, though, what, just in case?
Well, when it's twelve o'clock, one o'clock in the morning, you're trying to place a kid.
Yep.
It's always good to have some backup.
Absolutely. Mr. Kennedy, any questions?
None at all.
Mr. Sanado?
No.
Okay. Well, gentlemen, uh, you've heard, uh, Mr. Crippo's report, starting with resolution one seventy six and concluding with resolution one eighty two. And, uh, so we'll take a motion to approve all of these, uh, resolutions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you both. Any final questions for Mike? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Mike, thanks so much.
You're in, actually.
All right, Mike, take care.
All right, thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have a couple of transfer requests. The first comes from District Judge Emoed's office, wanting to take a thousand dollars from her contingency, placing it into her line item for Staples, uh, Staples being the office supply company. Uh, again, we can, if you mind if I walk through these, and if you want, we can take one motion if, if we're all satisfied with that. Uh, because we only have two, actually, to consider. The second one is a proposal that falls under the jurisdiction of the commissioner's office. It would take twelve thousand and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents from the capital expenditures contingency, and placing that dollar amount into the capital expenditures' equipment maintenance and repairs line item, and this was for some security enhancements, I believe, that we need.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'll start with, uh, Chris, to see if Chris has any questions about both of these, on either of them.
That is pretty straightforward, John.
All right, thank you. Dan, any questions on either of them? Okay. Would, uh, one of you care then to make a motion to approve both requests?
I'll make that motion.
I'll shut them.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. We jump down to announcements. Uh, this board will meet once again, uh, in public, uh, one week from today, July twenty two, at ten AM, uh, in this room. And then, uh, tomorrow, July sixteen, at twelve noon, the, uh, prison board, the seven member prison board, which is chaired by Commissioner Sanado, will hold its monthly public meeting in this room, once again, twelve o'clock. Uh, I'll note that the room is empty, uh, so we have nobody here to make any public comments at this time. Closing comments from my fellow commissioners. Mr. Kennedy, anything?
Nothing.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sanado?
No, I will be, uh, right early tomorrow morning.
Chris, thank you, and we do wish you, uh, a safe journey, uh, coming home. Uh, Joe, Vanessa, anything that we need to, we've overlooked?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Well, that takes us to adjournment, there being no other business to be brought before the board. May I please have an adjournment motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make it.
Thank you, gentlemen. All favorably say aye, aye opposed, the same sign, motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
We'll see you, Chris.
Cheers.
Yeah, be careful, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. Joe, you'll take care of us. How long's the baby stay?
I don't know, I'm sometimes, yeah.
Well.
Then we took the day off.
Well, that's good.